All right. Good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. I guess it's evening, six o'clock. I'm going to call this meeting to order at six oh one of the Georgetown Select Board. And before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to have a moment of silence in honor of our recently deceased Chair Bronwyn Tudor. So please join us in honoring Bronwyn with a moment of silence. All right. Thank you. And before we begin tonight's meeting, I did want to take a moment to just acknowledge how much loss our community has sustained this year. It's been a challenging year in all kinds of ways for people. And certainly for this community and again, all of the losses of our many service minded folks. Bronwyn is our most recent loss, and I want to acknowledge her deep commitment to this town as a member of the board. And she did approach every responsibility with diligence, whether it was on the Select Board, as committee liaison to various committees here in town. She dug into policy details with diligence, seriousness, and genuine care for Georgetown. She was thoughtful, well-prepared, and unafraid to bring forward her strong opinions. We didn't always agree, but when she believed that they would help move the town in the right direction, she made sure that folks got to discuss that, and she was always part of those discussions. Her service went far beyond this table. She devoted more than a decade to several committees, including the TOPMB. She chaired that for many years. The Comprehensive Plan Update, which many of us first got to know Bronwyn in that context. The GWL, the Conservation Commission, Solid Waste, Harbor Committee, and other groups. She played a key role in assisting our Conservation Commission and our town officers with securing and stewarding resilience grant funding, and those all reflected her commitment to improving and protecting the future of our town. One of the things that stood out about Bronwyn was her sense of responsibility and her belief that good local government matters. And that is particularly true at a time right now when the world seems to be fighting with each other. We can feel good about the community work we do and continuing to maintain bridges across agreements and disagreements with one another. It requires all of us to show up, just like Bronwyn did, to do our homework and to care about the community that we live in. Bronwyn did all of that, and she did it consistently. As we remember Bronwyn, we're also thinking of David, her husband, and her extended family. We hope that David, you, and all of your family can feel how much Georgetown has appreciated Bronwyn and the devotion she gave to this town. So as we continue our work, I hope we can do so with the same dedication and diligence and integrity that Bronwyn and many others before her have shown this town. So thank you.
Thank you.
Let's keep going. The next and first item of business is the election of a Select Board Chair for the remainder of this year and into the 2026 year, rounding out the fiscal year of June 30, well, and the next town meeting, which I believe is June 13. So are there any motions? Katie, would you like to?
I would move to make you Chair of the Select Board for the remainder of the year through June 30.
And you don't want to serve?
I do not. I think you are the pick, if you're okay with that.
All right. I will. I guess I'll accept that nomination and second it. All those in favor?
And by roll call vote, Aria E?
Yes.
And Katie Goodwin?
Yes.
That is unanimous of those present, unanimous. It's not my card.
Okay. Are there any items to be added to the agenda, anyone?
The only thing is if we wanted to talk about the Thanksgiving meeting or not.
Yes, okay.
Or Thanksgiving week meeting.
Okay, so that would be the 25th or 26th, right? Thanksgiving's the 28th?
Thanksgiving is the 26th. We would be looking at the 25th.
The 25th, all right.
And there is just a discussion whether or not we wanted to hold that or push to December.
I think, I think we can. I'd like to. What do you want to do?
I think we should just keep it on the 25th. I'm around.
Yeah, let's, let's definitely hold that, and if there's nothing pressing and we don't need to do anything, we can then make that decision. That's, that's my inclination as well.
Or if you guys have plans or if you're traveling.
Yeah, I'm not traveling.
I should be here.
You should be here too. Okay, all right. Yeah.
All right.
And then, yes, is there any public comment? And I'll start with, we have two members of our community here in the room, Karen Cowling and David Trig. Welcome. Is there any public comment?
I am on behalf of the Solid Waste Committee. Do you want to acknowledge Bronwyn? And because she was our liaison to the Select Board for many years, and I know we exasperated her sometimes at our slow progress on things, but she really did push us in the right direction and thinking about how to approach the changes that are happening with, you know, Solid Waste and the transfer station. And I think we really did make a lot of progress this past year because of her. And I think we're ready to move forward with that, that I'm not sure we would have done without her prodding. So I do want to acknowledge how helpful she was to us.
That's good for folks to know. Thank you, Karen. David, did you have any public comment?
I might add, I don't know Bronwyn well. I've already been in town, I mean, three years so far, but I found her sharp as a tack and a real inspiration in that regard. So maybe, and we just hope we might be able to achieve that in the years to come.
All right, so we apologize for the beeping that's happening behind us. Somebody's.
That's right, right?
I believe.
Yes, it is.
Okay, so that's just an unfortunate thing that hopefully the owl's not picking up. Is there any public comment out there for those of y'all who are joining us on Zoom? Okay, well, then let us talk about our scheduled appointments. Do we have any scheduled appointments?
We have none tonight.
Okay. With the minutes of October 28, I'm actually going to move that we table those minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aria E?
I.
Katie Goodwin?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
And then assessing items. Let's talk about setting the mill rate, and thank you both for the excellent work you've done on getting these numbers to us and the comparative analysis, analyses. I trip over that word too many times, right? And so let's get down to business. Tell us what you think is the most important thing that we need to know, and I, from my perspective, I'm focusing on the the overlay associated most with the second and third options, but go ahead, Mary.
So what you have in front of you, these, these are what we call the tax rate calculator. We have this year $925 million in valuation. And underneath that, so that's your top section. And then, which includes your homesteads and all that stuff, so the taxable value is 925. And then you have your assessments, your county tax, your municipal appropriation, and then your, your school. This year, we're anticipating $39,000 in municipal revenue sharing. That is, was a conservative estimate based on, you know, what we knew at the time, and we're sticking with that. And then the, the $200,000 is what we had voted at town meeting to take from undecimated front balance to reduce taxes. Okay, so you have a bunch of different scenarios in front of you. The minimum tax rate that we can say, we can do is 6.07. The maximum is 6.37. We normally toss the lowest and the highest. The lowest would only give you, would actually be a negative overlay. The highest would give you 200, about 280. So like I said, there's a bunch of scenarios in front of you. I, as the Treasurer and Finance Director, like the 6.28, which gives me about 189 in overlay, or the 6.29, which gives me about 198.
That's what I like too.
And you had, I believe you had also been given this, this cover sheet, which pretty much told you what we've been raising in overlay in the past. Okay, so, you know, I think that that, we're, we're still with this, with this new valuation stuff. So I think that, I think that us having a little bit extra overlay is not necessarily a bad thing. As you know, the, your abatements go through the overlay account.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is just the historical.
Yeah, that's just where we have it. Yeah. Okay. And last year, we raised 209 in overlay, the year before, 183. Last year's valuation was 924. It hasn't gone up. Well, didn't go up very much this year because we lost, we lost quite a bit of valuation. With a couple of, with a couple of abatement issues, as well as one of our larger properties going into.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would just note that I'm, Mary and I have gone through these numbers quite diligently. I'm very comfortable with the 628 or the 629. Again, I think it keeps us in that band of the overlay where we've been historically. I would just also add, as Mary was talking about valuation, one of the changes this year that came in following the abatements, our Shoreland Zone ordinance and our building ordinances had some severe restrictions on properties with certain types of slope and frontal dunes in the Shoreland Zone. And the assessing agent felt very strongly that we had to be fair and equitable if somebody cannot use that property to its full potential to offer some reduction. So that's why when I used to say we were a billion dollar town, I think we're just a hair under that. And I'd also just note that the 925 excludes the big exemptions like Reed State Park, which we're not going to be getting any tax revenue on.
Okay.
Yep.
And we had a healthy overlay last year, as I recall.
209.
So I'm, you know, I'm comfortable with the 628, but I don't know if you feel, I don't know how you feel about that.
Between 628 and 629. I feel like there's such a small preference that I could, I'm comfortable either way.
It's pretty negligible.
Yes. Do you have a strong feeling either way, either of you?
I don't. I could go either. I could go with either, whichever you guys are comfortable with.
Same here. I'd say that I tend to err on the side if we feel it could be either to go on the lower end, but that's just my personal preference.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would think so too.
And this current mill rate, where we sit right now, or last year's mill rate was 6.02.
Right. So we wouldn't hit two.
And, and just for, not necessarily the board, but for the community members listening in, the mill rate is what you'd pay per thousand dollars valuation. So if we went, last year it was $6.02. This year, if we go forward with the 628, it'd be $6.28.
And my recollection over the years at least has been, and I don't know where we stand in the rankings now, but we've had, for a while, we had the lowest mill rate in Saginaw County, and I think.
Still do like.
Okay. I know.
Good job, Mary.
So, all right, well, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. So I moved to set the mill rate for the 2025-2026 tax year to the .00628.
Resulting in an overlay of?
Resulting in an overlay of 189,624.74 for our overlay.
I'll second that. Motion, all those in favor?
Aria E?
Yes.
Katie Goodwin? Actually, with us all in person, I don't think we have to do the roll call.
Right.
That's, yeah.
Oh, great.
Right.
And then the net thing would be setting the commitment date.
Right.
And the town office, we were kind of running taxes are due 60 days from the date of commitment, which is typically always the day that we also mail the tax bills. Mary and I have discussed that next Friday, the 21st, makes the most sense. That would push the 60 days out to the day after Martin Luther King Day. Had we done any other day next week, frankly, it would be falling into a holiday weekend, and it's much better to put it right on a day we're open.
Yes.
January 20th.
Yes.
Yeah, it would be the due.
Which would be the due date.
Yeah.
Well, interest would begin to accrue on the 21st.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're due, they're due, of course, when they're postmarked. We give a 60-day grace period.
Right.
And 61 days would be the 21st.
Yeah, so that's important to note. They're due, once, once they're upon receipt, there's a 60-day grace period. And then interest accrues on the 21st of January, if we set the commitment date for the 21st, which is where we're headed.
And interest is at 8%.
Interest is at 8%.
So, those are all important points for folks in our community to be aware of. And is there any further discussion?
No.
Okay.
I moved to set a commitment date of, no, well, would the commitment date be November 21st, 2025? Or the 2025-26 tax year?
Okay, I second the motion to set the commit, tax commitment date for November 21st. Great work.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Thank you.
Sorry.
It was.
I was coming to the great work.
Hey, thank you.
It's, you know, it's a push to get to this point, particularly given the amount of assessment, assessing items, abatements that y'all have tackled over this year, so.
And.
Great job.
And a huge amount of credit to Pat Dow and Bill Van Tynen as well for their work this summer, doing a lot of the summer pickup work. It helped us with some of that valuation.
Okay, great. All right. And then I see we've got different correspondents from Senator King. And is there anything noteworthy you would like to address in that, Tyler, in these various correspondence?
I think the only item of correspondence that I, all of it's great and worthy of diving into, the election results in Georgetown, we're here. We've been involved with the Saginaw County discussion on multiple county tax payments. That conversation was originally slated for tonight at their commissioner's meeting, but they pushed it off to later in November or December. I'd also note, and I want to just pull it out so I'm reading the numbers right.
Can I ask you a question before you get to that? So when, when they do hold their meeting, will you be able to attend?
That is my hope, provided it's not on a night that we're double booked.
Right.
So, but my goal is to be there, and I reiterated to the county commissioners, this was not Georgetown starting this conversation.
Right.
Because we've been, some nights, the only town showing up because they seem to line up on other towns' meeting nights, so. For what that's worth.
Okay, thanks.
And I wanted to flag as well just the updates that the Health Trust announced on insurances. We will be seeing some increases on health and dental, which fell into where we were targeting roughly with budget. There's actually a decrease on vision and.
Like 40 a month?
Yeah.
Right.
So I just wanted to flag that as well.
Yes, thank you. Vision's about the only thing that any of us working on benefits has all saw decreasing, but, you know.
It was a 6% increase. It wasn't as bad as I thought it could have been.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, some markets, it's at 20%.
Yeah, we were lucky.
Yeah.
We, yes.
The Health Trust really does, does good for us.
Yeah, that's great. All right, any, on the continuing items, anything we need to discuss on the pumping receipts, the discharge licenses? Or the NERFS?
Not at this stage, just to flag that they're out there. Community Center, when septics are pumped, we get receipts of that here at the town office, as well with the PBR NERFS. I'm diving in a little bit more to learn more on these projects. But I wanted to make the board aware that they were at least going on on the island, so.
All right. Let's now turn to committee updates. Katie, do you want to go first?
Yeah. I wasn't able to go to that winter moth presentation, but I'm looking forward to it. I was at the Georgetown Preppers Meeting, which was great. There wasn't, there were about 15 of us.
Okay, great.
The dog chaos.
Yes.
Was there, and his handler, and we went over, you know, just community building to prepare for emergencies, and, and that felt like good, good conversation, good work. Done. Michelle Malanson's heading that. She's kind of doing, I think, countywide. I think there's about eight different meetings happening. We were the last of her eight.
Saving the best for last.
Yeah, yeah. And the Planning Board met on the 5th last Wednesday. Yeah, the short-term rental ordinance has been drafted. They're moving forward with that, and it's looking good. I think there's a lot of editing and workshopping to be done, but that's probably for the next meeting.
Okay.
And yeah, there was no fire department and no cemetery.
Yeah, great. Let's see, for my committees, Shellfish did not recently meet. Harbor, Harbor's meeting on the 20th, as I recall. Let's see it on here, but, and Solid Waste is changing also. Is that going to be the 20th? Okay, that's going to be the 20th. So, you know, obviously with the loss of Bronwyn, we will have additional committees, and we, Katie and I will work that out. And who's going to cover what, but we will have that covered between the two of us. The Conservation met on the 10th, and obviously got, was getting ready for the Winter Moth Program, which looks like it was very successful last night. There is a Zoom recording that you indicated will be up. The, their conservation, the Conservation Potluck is now scheduled for January 24th. And so that'll be a lunchtime potluck for folks. The and Rec Committee is getting ready for Holiday on the Harbor, which will be December 6th. The Jammers will be playing again. There'll be fires. Santa's going to make an appearance, thanks to the Fire Department again. And so we hope that folks come out and, obviously, in the time that we've had and this year, with all of its various challenges for families, it'd be a good opportunity for us to come together and enjoy each other's company. So I think that's it for my committee updates. I'm probably forgetting something, but I'm sure somebody will throw it out in the chat. The School Committee looks like it's meeting. Thank you, Tyler.
Tomorrow, right? Yeah. I forgot something.
Go ahead.
The Planning Board had a really interesting conversation about, there was legislation passed recently that allows for more dwelling units to be built on land, on less acreage, and thinking about water. They had an expert come in and they were just, they were talking about the water systems on an island like Georgetown, and how that could impact the town, and thinking about that, getting ahead of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. And I know that, speaking of water, the Waterfront Committee, next Wednesday, School Board Meeting is next Wednesday at 5:00. The Waterfront Committee will be meeting soon and rolling out its plan, I think, for at least one informational meeting for the town to keep that initiative going. And so I'll round up again with Mike Farina and Pat Burns and Marissa McManahan, and those folks who are working on, John Jones, who are working on the Waterfront Committee. So I think we finally covered it all.
I think so.
Okay. All right.
Definitely not a School Board meeting tomorrow. It's Friday.
It's Friday. You can go, but I'm not the only one. Willa or Jen will be there.
See, we're used to these meetings being on Tuesdays.
Tuesdays, so that's why, yeah.
And I finally got it on here, but I missed.
I know, you're dead. You did get it on there. All right. We should actually add the Solid Waste, because I know they changed theirs. So that's, that's good. You know, when, November and December are hard with all the various holidays, so it's hard to fit everybody in. And it may be that, you know, Katie and I can't make one because we're double booked without a committee meeting, so. But we will certainly do our best. All right, is there, I'm sure there's a town administrator update, so lay it on us.
I just wanted to share that the governor has authorized the lowering of all flags in Georgetown in memory of Bronwyn Tudor, starting this morning and through her memorial service. And the governor sends her sympathies to Ms. Tudor's family and the entire community. That was a really nice gesture for recognizing Bronwyn, and I think it goes a long way. I also wanted just to share with the board that we're not, by any means at this stage, ready for what the next steps are, but we have been in touch with MMA, and we'll be looking into that in the coming days and weeks.
Yeah, we, we've had an initial discussion about a special election, but this is not the week to do that. That's no way to argue somebody. So details to be announced in that regard. Do we have a date on Bronwyn's service?
Not yet, and when we have that, I will share in real time. It just, I think there's still some moving parts. And then the last thing that I wanted to add in a short update tonight is I had originally been planning to take a vacation day next Thursday, and provided that we're all done with taxes and the tax bills are sent off, I'd like to hold on to that date.
I'd love for you to hold on to that, yes.
And beyond that, I have nothing unless there were questions for me.
No, no questions. All right, is there any old business?
There was no old business on this agenda.
All right, so there is a Virtual Property Tax Academy, so I would move that, that you attend on Georgetown's behalf, that professional development.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Perfect. Two to zero.
And then let's talk trash.
Contacters.
Come on up.
And I am going to.
Thank you all for the research and effort you put into educating us on contacters.
I think Dave is, there he is.
There's David.
With one and a half eyes. Actually, maybe it's two and a half because he had the surgery, so his eye should be better now, so.
You need a patch, Dave.
I got a patch, but you can see through it.
Yeah, we want a pirate patch.
At our last meeting, after reviewing all of the information, we got quotations from Recycling Mechanical, which we got the recommendation to contact them from Lincoln County Recycling that we deal with, and Atlantic Recycling, which is what we've been doing, using as for service and everything. They both sent us multiple estimates for new, used, refurbished, et cetera. And after reviewing those at our last meeting, we recommended that probably going with Recycling Mechanical hybrid refurbished, because it was factory refurbished at the factory. It had a good warranty, and the price was within our reserve, equipment reserve fund, so are very close to it. I think maybe a few hundred dollars over. But we also recognize that sometimes a new machine is better than even a refurbished used machine. So we, Atlantic Recycling had one at $32,145. They had a one-year warranty, et cetera. But then Dave, and I will defer to Dave both, because he understands what he's talking about, when, for me, it's just numbers and things like that. That he did some research today and thinks that maybe the, the one from Recycling Mechanical that is a factory refurbished, refurbished one, and within our price, is actually the better option. If you want to go ahead, Dave, and share your information?
Sure. The, the factory refurbished unit carries remarkably actually a better, slightly better warranty than even the new unit they sell, which sounds unbelievable, but I, I think in, in order to entice people to think about these machines, in addition to their one-year warranty, which is standard with most of the units and from other vendors as well, they, they warranty a lot of the big moving components, the pump, the motor, and so on, for two years. So that's, that's pretty advantageous from that regard. So I was focusing on that, but I also started thinking about service. Both of these outfits are in New Hampshire, and when we need help, it's not like calling somebody from Brunswick or Portland, and it's expensive. No matter what you do, it's expensive for them to come down. So I called them up today to talk about travel time, labor rates, et cetera, and there's quite a difference between the two in that regard as well. And the the Recycling Mechanical labor rate at 97.50 compares to 165 from Atlantic Recycling. And that, in addition to travel time, if you, if you just sort of work up a service call where they drive here and spend two hours, it, it's considerably more expensive to go with Atlantic. more expensive to go with Atlantic, um. I've got a lot of numbers here and I'm looking at them through one eye, which is really weird.
I haven't do, if you need me to.
Yeah, I gave that, that, why don't you do that little comparison of, that I did about travel time?
Atlantic Recycling, we're looking at the new machine at a rate of a hundred and sixty-five dollars an hour for labor and travel, so if they came for a two-hour service call, nine hundred and seven dollars, fifty cents. Recycling Mechanical, their flat rate is four hundred and twenty-five dollars, includes the route for a round trip, plus ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents for uh labor. So a two-hour call with them would be six hundred and twenty dollars. Almost the difference of three hundred dollars. And if the service was say longer than two hours, we would be paying more, you know, per hour, but the difference of a hundred and sixty-five versus ninety-seven dollars.
Yeah.
And their flat rate for the round trip, we're not paying them for the labor rate for the travel time as well, because it's just four hundred and twenty-five. So that even if it's more time, it may turn out to be a better deal.
Right, it's capped, so to speak, yeah. Well, I've, I've heard what I need to hear.
I'm thankful for the new information today.
Me too.
And it, and it, and it's within our budget, which
Right.
Just, just feels good, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You can thank Dave, he had nothing to do today after he got a surgery, so he could do all this research.
Thank you, David.
Nothing to do.
And helped us make the right decision.
Uh, David, can I just ask you one question?
Yeah, I hope I have the answer, yeah.
Um. When we were looking at the new one, it, it was a three-phase power unit, I see this is also a three-phase.
Yep.
VFD adapter. Now, according to the Atlantic Recycling Equipment One, um the town will be required to install a hundred amp electric disconnect wired for two forty-volt single-phase power so that they could wire it into that VFD unit, would that not be needed?
We, we have what, we have what we, we have what we need there now.
Okay.
For the VFD unit to, we have that disconnect, yeah.
Okay, because I guess what I was getting at too was that the thirty-two thousand dollars did not include an electrician to come down.
Right.
Which, one, we know how hard that is to get them, and they're also pretty pricey, so I just wanted to make sure that it was, was part of this plan originally, thank you.
Right, yeah.
All right, so it sounds like Dave and Karen, your recommendation is with the um recycling mechanical.
Yeah, and um Allison is here, and I think she also got the email and um, and the email said she thought was supportive of that too.
Okay, yeah, great. All right. Any further discussion amongst us?
So where do we go from here, that there's a five, there's a five uh week timeframe on that, um eh, who, who's going to communicate with uh with the vendor?
We're about to take the next step. And Katie's on tap to do that.
Yeah, we'll approve it.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm.
No, you're good, Dave, you're good.
All right, yep.
Um. So I would like to approve the purchase, I make a motion to approve the purchase of the trash compactor from Recycling Mechanical
Mm-hmm.
for twenty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll second the motion to purchase from Recycling Mechanical. All those in favor?
That is unanimous.
All right.
And, and we're authorizing the use of their reserve fund.
Yes, we are authorizing, um, so uh.
Their reserve fund currently has a, about twenty-six thousand dollars in it.
Okay.
So we would take whatever they have in their repair line and then take the rest from the reserve fund.
And they have four eighty in there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, wow, so, so just uh in case folks aren't hearing, there is a reserve fund uh for solid waste, this is why we have reserve funds um for these capital expenses, and so we uh an excellent job identifying um these vendors and the appropriate um options for the budget, and so this is a win-win, and with the motion that has just been approved, the next step is for you, um, your, your committee to order it, um in coordination with Mary as our finance director.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll be bored for it.
Yeah, and I, I will make, um, I, um, yesterday, Wednesday, uh when I saw Jim at the transfer station, apparently um Lincoln County Recycling got a new compactor or whatever through Recycling Mechanical, and he was saying how they pleased with, how prompt they were with everything, let's go for it, so.
Right.
I think we're making a good decision by getting some organization, some company that will be responsive to our, our needs.
Right, and also that another sister organization is already.
Right.
Um, so, you know, purchased and it's utilizing. I mean, for the times that I've gone to the transfer station and a compactor didn't work, you know, it, it, it made me think.
Right.
How old is this thing? When's it gonna next break down, it's, it's, I'm sure for Jim and the guys, it's a little anxiety producing.
Yes, it is, um, and I will know, and uh Dave pointed this out at our last meeting, is that what you put your trash in, the hopper, is still there, it's gonna be the same thing, it's the compactor's down below, so you, people won't even notice that it's a new.
Different, right.
A different.
So we're getting less bang for our buck, we can't even see it. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen, for coming down, thank you, Dave.
Yeah.
And Allison. All right, um. And then um we are going to, we've deferred any committee appointments until our uh next meeting, we're into December. We have an item for signature, the, um, oh, we have nothing for signature at this point, so now we're back to public comment, is there any public comment here?
Lisa has her hand up.
Okay, hi Lisa.
Hello. How are you? Thank you, um, I, I just I'm not sure if I speak for all of the planning board about this, but I wanted to bring this issue to your attention. I am thrilled that there is, appears to be anyway, an increase in our townspeople's interest in serving on committees, it's great. The planning board now, as you know, has two alternates who are highly qualified individuals and very motivated to participate, which again is great. I've been on the planning board since two thousand eighteen, and in the past, I wasn't even aware that we had an alternate, um, or alternates. We now have two who are very active, our second one joined us at our last meeting. I know that um Katie is very aware that our planning board meetings, it's not unusual for our board meetings to go till nine o'clock at night. And there are times when our chair says we need to stop now because we are all tired and not thinking clearly, and so sets us a cutoff date at nine o'clock. I'm quite sure I speak for all the board members when saying that the table that we sit around is woefully inadequate. We are all there, five of us in the board with computers, and we very often have applicants with plans who try to set the plans on the table so that they're visible for all of us, and it is next to impossible to do that. We are now adding two alternates who are also attending these meetings. We have seven people attempting to sit around the tables. So that is a huge problem, which as I said, I don't think I am speaking alone in that, I'm, it's a, it's an issue that we as a board have spoken of a number of times. Um, but what is.
News on that, Lisa, the good news on that is we've, I've talked to Tyler and we're gonna be purchasing a bigger table and repurposing this one.
Excellent, glad to hear that. The other issue that came to my attention at the last meeting was we did have a guest speaker who was speaking to us for about forty-five minutes, as we had many questions for him. Um, we had three applicants, so our meeting in itself could have gone beyond nine o'clock, we could have been there till ten o'clock. With the addition of two members who are learning and who have questions, and who also have comments and contributions to the meeting, in my mind, the meetings have become to some extent inefficient and cumbersome. It's very difficult to conduct meetings and ho, and make decisions and have conversations when we are also teaching new members at the same time. And I'm not sure how to best address that or how to best handle that. But for me, when I go to a meeting, because we have a lot of ground to cover, and we are now also covering the short-term rental issue, and we are also covering the issue with water in town and how to best handle that, um, we've got a lot of material to cover. And we have held workshops because we can't do it all in planning board meetings for things like short-term rentals, um. I don't know how to handle seven active participants in meetings. And so, and I don't know how you handle that as a select board either. I just want to bring it to your attention that it's very challenging at this point to hold a meeting, to accomplish tasks, and to educate new members at the same time. So I appreciate you listening, as I said, I don't know how you solve that. Uh, I looked on the, i- in New Hampshire, alternate members are allowed to participate when they are substituting for a member that's absent, but otherwise are treated as part of the general public.